Chief, Chief Fatio, would you take your microphone and in thirty seconds tell us what, review what just happened?
Yes. So as we responded outside to the loud banging noises is all you heard, the general was banging on the sliding glass window actually asking for help. So Officer Howdy is out there right now speaking to him and we have another officer arriving around soon.
Thank you for your speedy response.
No problem.
Mr. Hawkins, please continue.
Alrighty, so we were talking about traditional schools versus, versus grade banding. So one of the conversations that happened with the task force is at the end of that dialogue, it was a recommendation to really look at grade banding seriously. And I'll talk about that a little more, I'm gonna move on. So do a real quick recap, when we look at the capacity for a couple of our schools to house all of our elementary students, you can see here Harrison Schmidt and Stout Elementary, if you maintain the traditional neighborhood school K five model, you can see the Harrison will be seventy-five percent capacity whilst Stout would be eighty-two percent capacity. This is a K five ma- ma- model. Someone is going, wait a minute, aren't our schools currently K six? They are. There's a dialogue to be had regarding sixth grade here momentarily. If we went to the grade banding model that was presented earlier during our presentation as well, this is what that model would look like. If you went K two to Schmidt, you would be at ninety percent capacity. If you went three, five to Stout, which I think goes back to what it may have been some years ago as far as fourth grade being there, and I'm not sure if they had other grades, but if you go that three, five model, then you're at seventy-eight percent capacity. That ninety percent capacity at Schmidt is not necessarily old two type, right? As I told you before, I'm much more comfortable between eighty-five, ninety as opposed to ninety-four. Again, you want to have just a little bit of stretching room. Sixth grade, so within the dialogue of the, of the task force, the question became, you know, what would happen with our sixth graders? Do we keep them at the elementary? And you could. Now, if you keep them at the elementary, these numbers get a little tighter significantly, right? Because you'd probably be K three in one spot and four, six in the other. You could do it. And the same thing, if you kept sixth grade under the K five model, once again, these numbers get a little tight, but there's absolutely room to do it. But one thing that we recognize, if you go back, I think I showed you, the La Plata utilization was extremely low. There's a whole wing at the middle school that hasn't been used since we went to Sixth Street, right? It's just empty. When we put sixth graders down to the elementary, we basically vacated a portion of that school. Conceptually, the idea is to go back to the six, seventh, eighth, what is the traditional middle school model, utilize that space more effectively, give those sixth graders the opportunity to engage in extracurricular activities as well as learn the middle school under the resources, programming, all the things that need to happen there so that they're going to be better prepared to go into the high school. What typically happens right now is we get sixth graders who show up to the middle school, and seventh graders, they got one year to figure out what it's like to be in middle school, and then they've got the next year they're about to get trained to go to the high school, right? And they don't really have the time to understand what that process of maturity is in the middle grades. By moving sixth grade back up to the middle schools, you kind of create that natural middle school process of learning and maturation. And you're only going to still be at sixty-one percent of utilization. One of the other dialogues that the task force had was looking at boundaries, right? There are some boundary issues, minor though they may be, they have huge impacts. And so they, we addressed that need, I'll talk about that here in a little bit. And then, of course, we talked about transportation. Would transportation be impacted? If we did traditional more or if we did grade banding? What we were told by Montoya Bussing is from a cost standpoint, you're not going to see a huge difference at all in dollars because the number of stops that those buses would need to make are going to remain the same. Now, this is conceptually a little different to think about, so let me put it this way. Right now, all of our buses at the elementary are even, yeah, at the elementary, they go to Sixth Street, and then they may go to Stout, or they may go to Harrison, right? If you, and/or Jose Barrios, right? So at least two stops, and that, and right now, when they were consolidated, they still went to the middle school and still went to the high school, right? What will happen is, if we go to consolidation and we move Sixth, remove Sixth Street from that list and Jose Barrios from that list, those buses, instead of going to Sixth Street, are either going to go to Harrison and Stout, or Stout and Harrison, still two stops. The way they articulate it is you're still going to have two stops, you're just adjusting where those stops are going. So from a cost standpoint, they said it's going to be pretty neutral. With the increased times, approximately five or ten minutes possibly for traditional schools, in grade banding, you could possibly see a decrease of five or ten minutes. And all that's going to depend on traffic and things of that nature, which is hard to predict right now. But what it came down to, there would be a minimal impact for transportation when we consolidate it. Other things we considered is, you know, what do we need to adjust within our bond program to make any improvements to schools that would need to be made as a result of this decision? Would there be any future conversations? Do we have any improved costs or savings? Staffing, are we going to save any money in attrition over time? Again, I told you guys before, right now, the number of teaching and staff that we need, we still need, but obviously seven to eight years from now, when you're down your students, there may be a different conversation of attrition when you don't need those numbers. But right now, we need everybody we got. Curriculum, what changes would be there, the ability to teach, for teachers to collaborate, these were all discussions we had in great detail. We also went down through a list and looked at grade levels, school fit, deferred maintenance, improvements, the savings. There's a lot of dialogues, and this just re, this is just one of the mini-slides of discussion that we did a deep dive into. Prelimarily, so I say preliminarily, the board meets on June sixteenth. On June sixteenth, the final recommendations from the task force are going to be put forward. So I don't want to get ahead of the board or that presentation, but what I will say is, as it has been said, the, the Facilities Master Plan Committee made a recommendation to close two schools. Respectfully knowing that there's history, there's heart, and there's a lot of, of just understanding of, of relationships with these two buildings. Also understanding that at some point, as a community, as a district, we have to recognize that we can't continue to maintain all the buildings that we have with the funds that we have. The recommendation was to consolidate Sixth Street and Jose Barrios to Schmidt and Stout. That's what the Facilities Master Plan Committee recommended. When the, the task force completed its process, they came to the same conclusion. The task force, after deep diving into the data, they looked at everything, right? Maintenance costs, necessary improvements, transportation, and what the next five years will look like. There are a whole lot of things that need to go into what the next year for the school year will look like before we're ready to consolidate. One of the reasons this process will have taken two and a half years is because we didn't want to rush it. If you recall, this conversation started in January twenty twenty-four. We've been having this dialogue for a long time. By the time it goes before the board, it will have been eighteen months just in discussion. Before the board makes the decision, excuse me, it'll have been, gosh, I think about twenty months. And by the time it's enacted, it will have been two and a half years since the very beginning of this conversation. There's a lot of things that can be said about this process, but you can't say it wasn't rushed, and no one can say that we didn't seek involvement and guidance from our community and resources. We're going to be looking at food services, information, information technology, financing, staffing, curriculum. There are still a lot of things that need to come together over the course of this next year. We also want to make sure that we pay homage and respect to the buildings if the board, the school board makes that final decision. What does that year look like? How do we respect the parents, the history, and everything that goes into those buildings? Also part of that dialogue is what happens with those buildings. We recognize that Sixth Street has a long history, I believe is one of the, is the oldest brick building in the state of New Mexico. Jose Barrios has a lot of cultural significance to Grant County. We know that Aldo Leopold has approached us and asked us about having a permanent home, home in one of those buildings. That's something we'd like to see possibly happen. There's some things that have to happen with that, but we're open to that dialogue. We were approached by a museum not too long ago about the potential for one of those buildings as well. I do think there was an opportunity for those buildings to continue to exist and be a part of our community in some other facets. Hopefully during the course of this next year, when the board makes its decision, we'll be able to look at those and explore what those options are. I want to pause for just a second. And make sure I mention this about the boundaries, right? And so when we talk about boundary adjustments, if we do the traditional model for Stout and Schmidt, one of the things that needed to be addressed was we have a group of kids out in Arenas Valley that leave Arenas Valley, pass Stout Elementary, pass Jose Barrios, and goes all the way out to Schmidt every day. That's one of those areas where from a, a bus transportation is not really economical, it's not, doesn't make a lot of sense. We have the same type of issue that happens right around Little Walnut, up, Little Wal- Walnut. There's a street where kids go to one school, and the, the other side, they go to another school. And so when we looked at the boundaries, we tried to fix some of those things, realizing that there may be a household or two that comes forward and says, but we've always gone to this school, can we stay there? Those types of conversations will happen, but overall, we needed to clean up the boundaries, and so we were able to do that. Timeline implementation, I'm almost done, you guys are staying with me, great, and no one's snoring. Perfect. Alright, so the final committee meeting was in May. In June next week, our board will have a presentation presented to them. They will not make a decision until August, and I'll tell you why we did that. We knew if we made a decision this summer, do you know what everyone would believe was happening by the time August started? Their school was closing. Everyone would panic and they'd want to know where are they going to go to school? There is no change going to happen this current school year. And so by making the decision to have that announcement made in August, after school has started, we wouldn't have to worry about people panicking in the summer about what was going to happen. So that's why the decision was made, to make the final decision on what the board wanted to do in August, right? Based on whatever their decision is, we'll begin the planning process in September, all the way through spring, in May, depending on the recommendation, whether it be Sixth Street or JB, if not both, we will do that, we'll then continue improvements for Stout and Harrison, whatever those projects are, to get them ready for the upcoming school year, twenty twenty-six fall. Looking forward, there's a projection you see there, twenty twenty-eight, twenty thirty-two. The feasibility study did several elements. It really looked at capacity and utilization, it looked at our elementary schools, but it also looked at our secondary schools and asked us the questions, where do we see our schools in the near future? One of the things that I encountered as I took this job and as we began this conversation with the Facilities Master Plan is making sure that we have a long-term support system and plan for our district and our school. It can't just be present, it takes time, it takes dialogue. One of the conversations moving forward was looking at La Plata Middle School and Silver High School and looking at the conversation of do we need new facilities? You saw where they were listed on that ranking, in five to seven years, they're going to continue to deteriorate, and we're going to be in a unique position as a community to be able to have a conversation about what could happen because those spaces are overly, they're, they're too big. Once again, you have huge spaces that are hardly being used to the capacity they need it, they need to be. Between twenty twenty-eight and twenty thirty-two as a community, you're going to be, going to be in a position to address that issue. We have land in between middle school, high school, in the field to look at options, and the feasibility study really gave some interesting guidance about what we could do as a community. I like that the board will have that document and resource to be able to plan out so that the conversations that we've been having for the last two years don't seem like they just popped up out of the blue, but part of a long-term sustainability so that the next generation of students for the next forty, fifty, sixty years, you're going to be ready to go. I know that Silver Plan's been here for a long time, so we've got to make some adjustments. Part of those adjustments right now are dealing with consolidation, but we also need to look to the future for our secondary students as well, just like we're doing for Cliff. And now, I will stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions from the council, Councilor Connor?
Actually, it's more comment than question. First of all, thank you to you and the task force and the other committee that worked on this because you can tell that you've spent a considerable amount of time thinking about all the options. I personally am happy that you're thinking about doing banding, that's how I grew up, and I think it worked really well, so hopefully that works out. The thing that has struck me though, as I've thought about this for two years already, is, I know this isn't probably the biggest deal for some people, but it is for others. If we lose Jose Barrios, Jose Barrios was an important part of our community history. And so I'm hoping that there can be some sort of other, you know, between the town and the, the school district, we can come up with some other thing we could name after him because I think he's very, very important, and it's kind of just coincidental that we got to see what police officers do firsthand during this meeting, and you know, he was killed in the line of duty, so he's very important to our history. So if we could just keep him in the back of our minds and think of something that we can, you know, so that future generations hear that name too.
Now, Counselor Connor, Mr. Mayor, Counselors, one of the things I would, I posed to someone was, if you looked at an Aldo, I'm speaking out of turn at the moment, but if you looked at an Aldo, would they be willing to continue to keep the name of that building to remain the same, right? And that was a dialogue that was pretty positive, right? Depending on, and again, I'm speaking out of turn, but depending on what happens with that building or Sixth Street, I would hope that there is some way to preserve the history. You know, first and foremost to me would be, how do you use those buildings? And how can they be a service to the community? And what does that look like? Whether it's the city having the conversation or the county. As we all know, we are landlocked, right? And so there's not a lot of new spaces to do a lot of things. Now, arguably, those buildings have a lot of need. There's a reason why we're having the conversation and you're looking at deferred maintenance, whether it's a roof, whether it's a whole plumbing unit at JB, or just ripping out, you know, the, the, getting to be ADA compatible, there's a lot of things that need to happen in both those buildings. But if they're able to be salvaged by the community, by an industrial entity, whether it be, again, museum, historical significance, the city, I do think that that would be worth the dialogue for us.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions by the council members? Counselor Snyder?
Yeah, thank you for the update, and I just want to say with a decreasing student population, there's a tough decisions that need to be made. And you've touched on the history, but I kind of want to, you know, repeat a little bit of the history of Sixth Street. It is on a site, is the oldest occupied educational site in the state, and the first school was built in eighteen eighty-two, and it was made of brick, and it was the only brick schoolhouse, not in the state of New Mexico, but in the territory of New Mexico. And I'm just hoping, and it sounds like you are thinking along those ways, that we can think of a way that we can keep that site an educational site. And once again, thank you for your update.
Any other comments by council members? Counselor Prince?
Just to try to briefly summarize and bottom line what we're getting in the presentation, as somebody who also, not a fast talker, but I also happen to talk fast, happen to revisit any of these concerns. I'm seeing four primary changes that are coming in with this summer and what we're going to be seeing some votes on. The Facility Master Plan update from just this past month, I mentioned it was signed in in May twenty-four, twenty-five?
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four. What we're going to be looking at then is going to be maintenance and taxes of structures, changes with grade banding, what we're going to be looking at for capacity and utilization, and, just want to make sure I've got my notes on this one here, school boundaries. Is there anything else from this fore then that you would say of the presentation just from the amounts that we just took a look at?
Counselor Prince, Mr. Mayor, Counselors, I, I believe that that's a really good, quick summary, I feel kind of awkward, I could have just sat that, sat down, saved you about thirty minutes. But what I would ask also, and you did a great job, I would also ask that a key element is also recognizing, we've got to pass SB nine so that we can maintain the schools that we have. So when we consolidate, if that's what the board decides, then being able to make sure we can maintain these facilities for long term is a key part. Understanding that capital outlay dollars, which the bond was approved, and we can't thank the community enough, are designed to address projects in the Facilities Master Plan. Every item that was earmarked in that Facilities Master Plan is eligible for funding, support, and match from the state to be done. But anything not in there, come this school year in August, and it will happen. We will have a plumbing issue at the high school, it happens every year. We will have some unit of HVAC that needs to be redone. We will have a circumstance that happens over at one of our fields, and at the moment, there are zero dollars coming in locally to maintain those facilities. And so that is something that we, we're going to need to address as a community.
And so I just echo that from conversations that I've been able to have with county tax folks. One of the major strategies that is just kind of the default thinking I've seen has been directed tax financing. Everything has to be planned for, and then we sell it to the public for what we vote on in the November terms. But obviously, the problems and challenges we have that come up, we have emergencies where all of a sudden, we're going to have a huge chunk of the landslide into the ditch. There is going to be a major water main break that's going to cause then further extensive damage. And so right now, I see us getting kind of pulled thin because of just some of that thinking. It seems to be almost anathema to just have money sitting in an account, ready to go for emergencies unless we have to shut down the institution then for months at a time while we then have to address it. So I just want to make sure then that if we're going to be looking at the different types of tax financing, we understand sort of what the default is with this directed tax financing, and then what we maybe should be thinking about, of just having money in a general fund available so that we can address these issues as they come up. Just from running so lean, I know Grant County's property taxes are among the lowest in the nation, and I just want to say, it's not, you know, correlation causation, but it should not be surprising that our property taxes are so low, and then also we have issues of this magnitude when it comes to our facilities. So just making sure that some of these conversations about taxes from what I'm responsible to for the public, taxes are not always bad. And so as far as us being able to start doing the conversations in public to ensure that these institutions are not only going to maybe just have to go through some consolidation period right now, but we can maybe start thinking about the funding. I know we only have a three percent lightning tax increment that we can do on a yearly basis, and so there's only so much that we can make changes for, but just on a personal note, I mean, as a public school kid and as my parents' public school teachers, it is one of the ones that I think is absolutely appropriate.
Any other comments by council members?
Thank you, I just want to add to that, if you don't mind me following, I just want to reiterate your point. Our solution won't raise taxes, we will just adjust our debt levy, we're going to adjust that down so that we have room for SB nine, so that doesn't make a change. So when we, when the community goes and votes for SB nine, you're voting to remain at the same mileage, just allow us to adjust how those dollars are spent so we can maintain our facilities.
So, I mean, as far as the major issues, just have to say, sixth graders getting banded out from the K through now five on that one, heard a hundred percent support. I don't know what's going on, if it's people's screens, but kids are getting older, younger, and so just making sure then that we don't have those types of growing pains then affect all of the grades beneath, absolutely understandable. I have questions about the methodology that we have from the Capital AE Group, just did a little bit of rudimentary check-in on them before tonight's presentation. And I understand them also to be sort of a construction management company, they've got locations in five different states, if I'm not correct, and I just kind of wonder then as far as where their numbers are coming from for any of the bids and the costs that we're looking at. And this isn't to say that, you know, we shouldn't be under-budgeting any of the issues, but some of the figures that we're looking at for about seventy-four million dollars to be, if I'm not mistaken, about seventy-something million dollars right now to be able to catch up on what we've been lacking on in the past ten to fifteen years or so here. Typically, we do have to go through a public bidding process, we do have to be able to vet our sources and have that then reviewed through on accounting, and that's just something then that I know they're kind of doing a bit more back of the envelope than I am thoroughly convinced on. And I understand that they're a construction company, but we do have variance in that.
So the answer to that, if you don't mind, if you indulge me for about two minutes. So when they do their calculations, whether it be, in this case within New Mexico, which they've done many projects for, they work through PSCOC. PSCOC has a model resource that helps to break down the cost, whether it's for ventilation, for an HVAC, or for any flooring work. When they go into that, they use part of the state model for approximating the cost along with square footage and things of that nature. So it is at least New Mexico specific, if not regionally specific. And so the cost of a building, for example, for rebuilding Cliff, that is going to be a reflective document based on our adequacy standards that are set by the state, right? And all the components that go into that square footage. What we know to be true, to your, to your point, is the cost of construction continues to grow at an exponential rate. And so even when you, they say the cost is forty-four million now, is the likelihood that we're going to see a fifteen percent increase on that, probably by the time it's done in, in two years? Absolutely, based on what the data has told us. Well, we know what the public schools capital outlay council is, once they approve a project, when that price goes up, they adjust their price to compensate for the difference. And so they at least have that going for them.
I'm going to now turn the time over to any other council member that wants to make a comment. Since this affects a lot of people in our community, I'm going to give the city administration and staff a chance to ask any questions or make any comments. Any?
I speak with Mr. Hawkins all the time, and he keeps me up on everything, and so I don't have any questions for him. I mean, we're working on some other stuff, we're going to work on some other stuff.
I'm also going to give members of the public a chance to ask a question or make a comment, and if you have a question, you have to come up to the microphone.
I don't bite, I haven't thrown anything in quite some time.
Bruce Ashburn, I have had the honor of working with this process from the beginning, pretty much through the entire process, and I will tell you that it is not an easy process, and everybody has their own, what do you want to call it, protected interest, shall we say? And to see the group of people get together and be willing to talk about how we can come to some kind of a negotiated solution that absolutely must be done. There's no question that we cannot afford to continue to spend, I believe the number was about a million and a half dollars in, in additional costs that we're spending to, to heat, cool, air condition, continue to repair. We had people that are contractors that are actually doing work on these buildings that are, are in the meeting saying they're so old that to repair them now, there's no choice but to dig things up, to go into walls, rip them down, go, go deeper than what a normal repair would be because the buildings are so old. We're not in a position where you can Band-Aid repairs at, at this point. My own elementary school in my hometown is no longer there, and, and it does bother me. I can't, I'm not going to lie, it bothers me when I go home and I see that it's, it's no longer there, they turned it into a fire, forgive me, chief, but, but what I had said, there's, there's choices that have to be made, there's choices that are, are necessary, and I, I just believe that this is one, in order for us to move forward and ever have a chance to truly examine having new schools in our area, we've got to look at this.
Thank you.
And I think, I think we've got the right person in charge of this.
Any questions, any other, any questions from the public? From the press? Thank you Superintendent Hawkins.
Thank you.
May I, if I may?
I would like to move on.
We have schools that are closing, I just had two further things I just wanted to check in on.
Okay, make it quick.
No worries. So just want to double check then as far as the demographics and enrollment numbers that we have here for K through twelve. You're kind of clocking and noticing the new private educational institutions and this sort of our historic private education institutions, you know, they've kind of expanded towards adding portables. Do you have any data or information as far as this K through twelve historic enrollment, does this include private schools, private institutions in it, or just the students that are enrolled in public institutions?
Just the students enrolled in public institutions, so it doesn't include Aldo Leopold, it doesn't include Montessori, nor does it include?
Cavalry and?
Cavalry, right? It's just our students. When you look at those populations of students, I don't want to undersell Aldo, but I, I, I don't think they have more than two hundred students, if not, you know, a little less than that. I would say the same thing about Montessori or Cavalry. Now, they may be, they may be much larger, I can't speak expertly to it. But yeah, the, our numbers are just public school.
Okay, just want to make sure, just because I don't want there to ever be sort of any kind of concern or fight between the private educational institutions and the public ones, but you know, we do have knock-on effects, and making sure then that we can maintain public trust for our public institutions is a big chunk of the job here. And then I just want to just double check as far as the teacher attrition, presumably we're not going to have any teachers losing their jobs on this, but if we do have folks that are nearing the age of retirement, as it sounds with the consolidation, with attrition, we're not looking to refill those positions at this time, should there be a change?
I believe at this time, if there was, if a teacher retired, we would still have to post that position and fill it. At this current state and where we are in the district over the next several years, we need the bodies, we need to continue to provide the quality education. I think on the other side of five or ten years, when we are in that significant decrease of two hundred to three hundred students, depending on the grade that those, the grades that that occurs in, I think you can have that dialogue about attrition. But if we have four teachers that retire this next year while we're going into those processes, we're still going to need four teachers, right? And so that's, that's a long time from coming.
And then have we had any conversations about deed restrictions or potentially with the dispensation of the properties? One of the things we have to do with public properties is figure out how it's going to transition, and even when we have schools that go into becoming private departments versus entering into private property sales or private development? into private property sales or private development, um, I would just encourage and ask, wonderful, just want to make sure that's on the table right now, as a lot of these properties, especially considering their placement in our communities. Uh, some people look at them with more dollars in their eyes than the rest of us.
Thank you Superintendent.
Can I ask one more question?
We are, and I'll move to...
Can I ask one more question?
Huh?
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
Yes, uh, just a real quick, I, you know, you were talking about plumbing issues and stuff. What is the long-term plan for the high school then? Are you thinking we're going to need to rebuild, or are you thinking we're going to be able to use it?
It's so funny that you ask that question, almost as if I planted that thought process. Long-term for the high school, um, in the middle school, I would say between twenty-twenty-eight and twenty-thirty-two, those buildings in, in La Plata is there, if you walk La Plata, you know this. Long-term on the other side, you need to look at doing a combination, middle school, high school, because you will have so few students at the numbers you have now, that having two separate buildings and the resources, then the extracurricular and all the needs, you're just continuing to further the same issue we have at the elementary, which is you're, you're spending a lot of money to maintain two buildings that could be one. And so if you're asking me what my opinion is, uh, between twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-thirty-two, as a community, those buildings will be so aged, even though that we've done some work on them, but age is still age. I think we're going to be in the right spot to look at what modernization looks like without having an impact at all on what we, where we currently stand on our, our mileage, um, because we will have paid so much into our debt levy for this current bond that we will have the ability with a ten mil waiver to go back to the state and ask them to build us a new school. And it's, that happens like twice in a lifetime, to be candid with you. It is rare that you have an opportunity to apply for a waiver, have the dollars that you need to build. And it just so happens that Silver's going to be in a position in that window to build a brand, another brand new school and have the state pay for it, if they wanted to.
Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Hawkins. We will now move to agenda item nine, public hearings, and there are none?
Under reports, we're going to have Bart Roselli do his report on the museum. Bart Roselli was going to do a report for the museum.
Okay.
In light of the time... In light of the time, I'm just going to jump to questions. No. Sorry. Um, for, I, in all seriousness though, I'm really thankful that the council is asked, or Alex has suggested, I give an update on what's going on at the museum, and I do have a brief report. Uh, but I want to say one thing is that I'm very happy and honored to have such an important job as the director of the museum in this community. For me personally, it's kind of a capstone. I've had a long career, my hair didn't start out this color, uh, and my mission has been to place the museum, this particular museum, but all museums, s- s- front and center in every community because they play an important role. There are memory, there are hopes, there are pride, there are important historical pieces that we don't want to forget. So museums shouldn't just be places that collect a lot of dust. They should be active in their community and they should address particular needs that a community has. It's, it, uh, so anyway, I feel lucky to be here. Well, tonight I have a brief report about what museum staff have been up to over the last year in serving Silver City and the wider Grant County. Uh, by the way, we have a stellar staff. We have some really professional, talented, dedicated, uh, staff members along, working alongside more than seventy great volunteers, one of them sitting right behind me. Uh, we couldn't do it without, without the volunteers, but the staff, uh, we're lucky to have each and every one of them. So I'd like to make three points. Uh, I have forty-two slides to make? No, I don't. I'd like to make three points about the impact that Silver City Museum has had recently on our community, our state, and our nation. Yes, we've had an impact on the, the nation's awareness of Silver City and Silver City Museum. One, we're up in our game with our school programs. Two, we are getting peer recognition, recognition, you know, every, every profession, whether it's attorneys or firefighters or police, have associations, local and national associations. We have one called the American Alliance of Museums, and I'll get into that a little bit later. Uh, and more widespread awareness, not just within the county, but regionally, as far as Tucson, Albuquerque, Santa Fe, Taos, Las Cruces, and El Paso. So first, we're serving more schoolchildren this year than ever before, at least the records I have of the Silver City Museum. We have programs with schools who come and visit the museum, and we have programs that go into schools in Silver Consolidated, in Baird, and Cobra. Uh, more than six hundred students visited the museum so far this year, and another two hundred students had programs delivered to them in their schools in all of those, uh, in, in every school district, uh, in our area. We've developed four new study units, we call them, using local history that supports state and local, uh, curriculum requirements. We develop it for grades one, grades four, grades eight, and grades eleven. Um, the Daily Press, there was a wonderful article that, um, appeared in the Daily Press, um, on, so I'm a D, sorry, um, on the front page, which talks about the various programs happening at the school, at the Silver City Museum. Thank you Lisa, you made us, it was a wonderful article. The, in your packets, there is a new effort on the part of the museum to reach out to young people. It's every kid or family who comes to the museum can pick up one of these activity guides and help them learn and get deeper into the exhibit that we have up. So the Silver City Museum is not just for adults, it's for kids and families. Not only do we have this activity guide that kids could pick up, families can pick up, but we built into the labels questions that a, a parent could use to help a kid learn more about that exhibit. So we're, we're reaching out to, uh, much more and more young people. The second point I want to make is that we've generated recognition among our peers. So our, Javier Marufo, our amazing curator, and I made a presentation last year in Albuquerque at the American Folklore Society, and we made a short presentation about our Nuestro Vos, our Chihuahua Hill History Project. A person who happened to be in the audience, just by, she was interested in the topic, happens to be the president of the American Alliance of Museums, that's our national association. She was so impressed with the work we were doing with Chihuahua Hill and the, all the oral histories that Javi collected, that she invited us to come to Los Angeles last month and make a presentation at their annual conference. Now, this is big news, especially for a museum guy who's been around for a long time. It's a national, it's national attention that Silver City got for a project we did, a local history project. The American Alliance of Museums attracts five thousand delegates from every single state in the union. So there are five thousand museum professions. Now, it gets better. The president, in her keynote speech, calls out the Silver City Museum for doing this Chihuahua Hill History Project and says to five thousand delegates, this is the kind of project every history museum should be doing in the country. Javi almost jumped out of his seat, he, because we didn't know it was, she was going to say it. So na- national, national attention, something we're very, very proud of. When Javi came back with that story, our heads would just explode every so bit. Um, we'll be appearing at a state, a by-state, uh, conference, uh, in the fall. The Historical Society of New Mexico is linking up with the Arizona Historical Society, uh, and we will again be presenting on some of our projects here. Another way we really appreciate and take recognition is our partnerships. We have a wonderfully rich partnership with LULAC. We support their programs and they promote our programs. We also have a partnership with WIL, uh, Western Institute of Lifelong Learning. We've just struck a, a formal agreement with Silver City Theater to bring forward our, a living history program where we will research and present historical characters. And Silver City has a, a long record of doing that. The group who performed out at the, the cemetery, we, they have packed up their bags, they've kind of aged out, but they've given us all their material. So we'll be do, we'll be using that material and others to bring living history into schools, into the streets, and at the museum. We also have partnerships, um, with Scotty West Media and Desert Exposure to help us, uh, and I think also recently with the Daily Press. We're also connected to the Chamber of Commerce, Prospectors, Rotary, Freeport, United Way, New Mexico Arts, uh, Council, and the New Mexico Humanities Council. Okay, coming to the finish line here. Third point, we have generated new waves of awareness. We threw, um, so a promotion campaign about our Nuestro Vos exhibit, because when Javi first got involved with this project, I said, Javi, this project is never going to end. There's always somebody else out there we haven't spoken to who has a connection to Chihuahua Hill. And we're promoting our project region-wide, as I said. Because of the promotion activities, some radio ads and, and, um, and, I mean, social media, this month alone, we had fifty thousand social media hits on our Facebook and Instagram. We average about six thousand a month. So from six thousand to fifty thousand, so a lot more people are hearing about us and they're reaching out and saying, you know, my, my great-grandmother lived on Chihuahua Hill, I live in Tucson now, but can we talk? And we can arrange that. Without our knowing it, um, a museum supporter took out a full-page ad in the Daily News just giving kudos to our staff and some of the work we were doing. We were shocked, again, we didn't, we didn't set this up. She paid out of her own money to produce this, this wonderful testimony to the work that Silver City Museum is doing. KTSM TV in El Paso just contacted me, they want to do a feature on Silver City Museum and the town at large. So they'll be sending out a, a TV crew, we're not quite sure yet, probably within a few weeks, to film at the museum and to film, uh, the town to produce a feature about Silver City. Our latest exhibit, um, is about the role of women in healthcare. Kim Petrovic, who is the leader of the nursing program at Western, uh, was on our advisory committee, and she's connected to a statewide association of nurses. And that statewide association of nurses, the New Mexico Association, the New Mexico Nurses Association, produces a monthly magazine that goes out to twenty-five thousand nurses who are part of this association. Twenty-five thousand nurses every month get this magazine. Because of our exhibit, she brought, uh, two folks who are involved with this association. One of them was Secretary of Health, uh, under Richardson. And they were so impressed with our exhibit that they want to have their fall conference here in Silver City and use our exhibit as, as a reception. So we're really excited about the, the coverage, uh, that we would get, uh, with these nurses coming to Silver City. Also in your packet, you have a couple other things. One is our latest, a latest copy of our newsletter, The Mansardian, um, which is actually trademarked by the town of Silver City. Town of Silver, Silver City owns the trademark on this, um, this newsletter. We opened, uh, well, we retrofitted our Nuestro Vos, our Chihuahua Hill exhibit, moved it upstairs to a more permanent location, so there'll always be something at the Silver City Museum about Chihuahua Hill and our Mexican-American citizens. You also have in your packet our gallery guide, so everybody who comes to the museum gets a copy of this. It's a mini-history of Chihuahua Hill, but it goes beyond that because it's got all of these QR codes, which if you have a smartphone, you can listen to many of the oral histories we collected as part of this project. We present at lots of community, uh, events like Tamal Fest, and we were just at Fiesta Latina at the Clay Fest. We keep a scorecard of, uh, our, of our accomplishments. We're always looking at attendance, um, we're looking at our volunteer support, our communications reach, our education reach, our collections management, and our store sales. So the, the numbers, I won't bore you with the numbers, but we're looking pretty strong when it comes to attendance and comes to our social media research, uh, reach. Last thing, coming out, I hope this month, is a book that's being published by Mimbrace Press called Unpacking Silver City. And we commissioned with ten different historians to write ten different chapters on different aspects of life in Grant County. And that'll be published by Mimbrace Press in the fall, I'm told. Um, so we're, we're up in our game with schools and teachers, uh, we've gotten some great professional and national recognition for the work we're doing, and we've got new waves of awareness, uh, thanks to our, our promotional efforts. So thank you for letting me share some of the good news. Uh, I'm always happy to brag about what our staff is doing at the Silver City Museum, and thank you so much to Alex Brown for the continued strong, solid support we've been getting. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any council member have any questions? Council Ben Coman?
Our next one, I want to thank you and your staff for doing a really great job. Uh, I really enjoyed the Chihuahua Hill story, growing up there as a young kid. I have some stories that I would probably like to share, uh, spoken with Javier, especially with my encounter as a young child with the Brown Berets coming to town.
Yes.
So I, I would love to spend some time and share my, what it was like growing up as a kid there.
Oh, excellent, thank you.
You guys are doing a great job, thank you.
Thanks. Our partnership with the Silver City Theater, they're hoping to bring this play, uh, The Last, Last Angry Brown Beret, I think it's called.
Brown Hats. Last Angry Brown Hat.
Uh, Brown Hat, excuse me. And we hope to be partnering with them to help promote it and, and present it, so, yeah. We have the exact opposite problem that Superintendent has. He's got more space than he needs, we've got more stuff than space. And so putting the Chihuahua Hill exhibit up on the second floor, it's great to have that floor space, but it's not the most accessible space. So we're looking at ways of making that space more accessible, using, uh, TV cameras and, um, video loops and, uh, websites to, to somebody who doesn't or isn't able to climb those stairs, they can appreciate that exhibit in other ways. So we're, we're working on that accessibility.
I, I want to clear something up.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Since he's talking about space and the school's talking about space, I want to clear up that it was not our museum that was asking for this.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Council friends?
I just want to commend you all so, that is, for what a phenomenal job. Uh, the CD as well as the museum did for hosting the State's Museum Society. I still hear about that conference, from everybody around the municipal league, and for some folks, it's the only time you've been able to have a chance to visit Silver City, and they've come back since. So thank you so much for your leadership.
Sure thing. You know, at that conference, that's where I met the director of the New Mexico State History Museum, Billy Garrett, who had been a town councillor, I think, in Las Cruces. But he's now the director of the state museum, and we had a chance to talk about our recently acquired Lim family collection. Lim is a Chinese family, one of several Chinese families. And we, we got a couple grants to kind of catalog this amazing collection of photographs, documents, and objects. And he was so impressed with some of the work we were doing, he gave us some... And he was so impressed with some of the work we were doing, he gave us some money to help manage that collection, and wants to work with us, once the collection is cataloged, to develop a statewide exhibit about the Chinese in New Mexico. So we're very excited. That conference was very helpful for us.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Thank you for that very informative presentation, it was a surprise to me, I hadn't been notified of it, but thank you very much.
Sure thing.
Next is agenda item 10, unfinished business and there is none. Next is agenda item 11, new business and there is none. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Councilman Friends?
May I let you, I move adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are hereby adjourned.